I just tonight to make the correct decisions for Nelsonville. We ask this and we would say.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Here. Has everyone had a chance for a few minutes in the last regular meeting? Any council discussion will set minutes?
Yes, um, the special meeting on the fifteenth. During executive session interim city manager Bernie Roll verbally resigned as city manager. When we came back, uh, president council, Mr. Dumpy made the statement, Mr. Roll resigned. Also, um, there were two council members not present when we returned. Mr. Sherman and Ms. Tingle.
We're as long as we could.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Okay, motion to adopt. Sorry.
Ms. Tingle? Yes, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes. Okay, um. Auditor slash treasurer. Taylor? Thank you, nice to meet you, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, can we amend the agenda? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done this before we started thing.
Oh, it's okay.
Um, there are two things that I think maybe we added, one is ordinance twenty-four twenty-three. And I think everyone has a copy of that. Um, and the other is, uh, the letter from Mr. Flowers about filling the position.
Okay.
I said. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Coman?
Yep.
Ms. Tingle?
Yes.
Go ahead, Taylor. Thank you much. Good evening, council. Good evening to the general public. My name is Taylor Sapton, if you don't know me, but hopefully you do. This is first, the treasurer's report, we're gonna start with March. Uh, cause we did miss last month, uh, council should all kind of copy. I'm gonna start on the first page, account balances of five point three three, three million. Uh, as of March thirty-first, on the second page, uh, we have the record of investments. You'll see Mr. Mullane has calculated up, uh, some interest payments. Uh, you'll see in April as well, the interest payments are and above, uh, what we experienced in many years. If anybody has savings accounts, like probably feel the same. If not, you might need a new bank these days, rates are up at four percent, higher. You'll see the bank reconciliation on page three, as well as the book reconciliation on page four. Lots of numbers there, but the number that Mr. Mullane highlights for me, I never know, highlights for you guys. The difference between bank and book balance at zero dollars is actually a very easy one. Uh, reconciliation wise. I'm trying to look at it more like that. I'll go on to April twenty-twenty-three. You'll see the increase in the balances of all cities funds to five point nine nine six. I should say on the treasury, uh, not technically the funds. In the treasury, you'll see the year-to-date investments on the next page, up to thirty-seven thousand dollars. Again, more than we received in many years, uh, almost a decade, and it's only April. Uh, which is helping the city defray things such as inflation costs. Uh, the bank reconciliation on the next page, book reconciliation. Coming out to a difference between those two numbers, the last number of zero dollars. Also a pretty simple reconciliation. So those are the city treasurer's treasurer's reports. I'm gonna scoot over here just so I can see a little better. We've got the Nelsonville auditors report, I know we've got a lot of folks here, it's difficult for some, it's gonna be breaking your neck. Uh, this is available on the website. Um, I can provide copies, anybody who wants one later. This is for March and April. My national summary, March and April two thousand twenty-three, let's start with March. We've got seven hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in revenues. And just short of one point one million in expenses. I sort of have a note here that says, uh, this is actually the last month where we typically have much higher expenses than revenues at the city. We have a lot of bills in the first quarter, what we pay for the full year. Uh, and then it flips in April, as you'll see, and stays that way for the rest of the year. Major fund balances at the city, at the end of March, five point two three two million. General fund just sitting under six hundred thousand. Uh, combined street fund four hundred sixty-two, this is always a reminder, I didn't do the I. Capital fund at two twenty-one, water one point two, sewer at nine oh eight. Uh, I'll go right into April, if anybody has questions, please stop me. One point seven million in revenues at the end of April and one point oh two nine in expenses. You'll see where that trend flips, we now have more revenues than expenses typically stays that way all the way through the end of the year. Uh, major fund balances five point nine million. Uh, six hundred fifty thousand in the street fund, or excuse me, general fund, and you can see down the road here, all funds just a little bit higher than the month before. Both months were very smooth reconciliation processes. This report is available online, it's called a state cash position with month-to-date totals. I have March and April here, it's always impossible to see on screen, just because it's just small. Um, but it is on the website, you can pull it up, I can give copies, March and April are both here. And I got this interesting question, so I've been trying to think about how to make auditors reports better, and then I promise I'm gonna turn it over to you guys, and you guys eventually. Uh, I can suggest it to some folks, you know, we get a lot of questions, and it's easy when it comes to finances for misinformation to spread around. Quite easily, as a matter of fact. And one of the questions I got recently, or at least saw on Facebook, was how do they even know, how do you know? That that money that I'm reporting and the treasurer's reporting, how's it in the bank for the city? And I don't know why it took me like three weeks to figure out the solution. But I was like, I'm just gonna post what I see when I sign into the bank, so everybody can see it. I was like, we keep getting the question, how do we know the city actually has the money it has? And, uh, uh, so I put on here, this auditor's report, uh, a login that I did today, actually, not at the end of April, but today. And, uh, it's the city's accounts. You'll see concentration sweep accounts, just like the treasurer's report says. And the way these other funds work is these positive funds, that's where we make our deposits, for of different types. And then they sweep into, that's why it's called sweep, into our concentration. This negative fund is actually where expenses come out, where we read our checks. So those checks are cash, and then they sweep over to the concentration. So I thought it was a good question, how do you know the auditors got money in the bank? Well, I'll show you bank. Um, required by law to give you a credit card report, nothing particularly exciting in our credit card reports. Um, we've got job postings, we've got training costs, uh, equipment purchases here, our year, or excuse me, monthly Microsoft cost. Um, water for the crew, pallet of water. Uh, there was a thirty-nine dollar. I know thirty-nine doesn't sound a lot, but that's a big deal in my office. Thirty-nine dollar over the limit fee on one of the cars. Deputy auditor Judy and I put in the request, Judy Smith, put in the request to have it abated, they approved it. And you'll see on Aprils, the thirty-nine dollars is back there. Including some more equipment, job posting, dirt purchases, and the stuff the city does. And I'm almost done, I promise. Uh, so I wanted to have some updates from the, from my office. Uh, the first is, is I've been in a lot of training the last couple of weeks. Uh, and then my staff is about to start a round of trainings for the summer and fall, and so May tenth through twelfth, I might have to move closer. I'm telling you, I gotta go to eye doctor. May tenth through twelve, I spent two and a half days in Columbus, training with other municipal finance officers across the state. These are auditors, finance directors, fiscal officers, all the different terms were called across the state. It was very helpful, it was my first time attending this group, um, and I wanted to bring up this question because there was one. Session where they said, what's the, what's a problem everybody's having, you don't have the answer to? And, uh, I'm sure there's lots of things I could have said, um, but. I said, the question I've gotten since I started as auditor, that I never know how to answer, is can we afford this? I get that question all the time. The truth is, I just showed you our bank account, we can buy a mansion up on Pine Grove, or maybe even nicer than Pine Grove. So the answer is generally, yes, we can afford it. But I said, I don't understand how to answer that question because that's the wrong question. And so if I give an answer, inherently the wrong answer. And what the auditors in the room told me was that it seems like based off my retelling, which is just my retelling. That after years of austerity cuts, so on and so forth, Nelsonville residents and leadership still ask the question, can we afford it? What they ask at cities who do this the right way is, how does this fit into our plan? How, what's our staffing plan for the next few years? What's our comprehensive plan? This has been mentioned before, it's not my idea. It is probably a century old, a century old idea. But as I mentioned this room before I'm saying it, but I thought it was prescient that it came up, that they said, if you're gonna add staff, somebody says. How's that impact our other staffing needs and who gets put off? Who's, who doesn't get a raise because somebody else does? If we buy a dump truck, what are we not buying for the fire department? And if we do get something for fire, would we not gain for police? No offense, no offense. But it's, it's a question of priorities and our plan. And so they suggested that I say at my next auditor's report, so here I am. That I actually challenge folks like the residents to questions to say, we know Nelsonville's a good, better community, we know it's a great place to visit. So it's up to us to create the five-year plan, how do we implement those things? That's the tougher thing. That's the much tougher thing, what comes now and what has to come later? Which street gets paid first? I know everybody in here says theirs. Uh, but that's not how government works, unfortunately, it's not how anything works. Um, but really, it shouldn't be mine first, that's a joke. That's a joke. Mine's not anywhere close to ours. Uh, so, um, I've got some notes in here about that, today I spent, and tomorrow I was spending fraud and prevention and internal audit classes. Some of the topics covered Pike County Sheriff bust, if anybody knows the story, it's fascinating, uh, right in the middle of the murders over there. And then there'll be some other things like confessions of fraudsters, and we'll hear from the attorney general and the state auditor. And I'll leave with a quick story, I put in the update on Rita here, but it's taking too long, I'm launching the clock. So I do wanna say to folks, there's been a lot of misinformation, it's actually been a very smooth transition, we have two problems we're working on right now. But I want to take on as quick as possible, not the time it deserves. That there's definitely some misinformation, one is that the auditor did income tax with, personally. The truth is, I was not tasked with it. My predecessor was not tasked with it, neither was his, neither was theirs. The charter reads, income tax will be done by an income tax administrator. And that there has to be one. The city of Nelsonville hasn't had one since Jan, excuse me, February of twenty-twenty. And so we were at a crossroads. About whether we were gonna help make sure folks pay equitable fair shares, not just some of us pay our share, and somebody else not pay theirs, but everyone pay their fair share. And council could hire a new income tax person and come, become compliant back with the charter, voted on by probably many in this room back in the day. Just before my voting days. Or we could use what the majority of cities and villages in Ohio have used, which is a state agency called Rita. I've got some math breakdowns here, anybody who's hired a person knows they cost almost a hundred thousand dollars on a good day, when they have benefits. And Rita will cost us between forty to fifty thousand, less than fifty percent of my very conservative estimate of what an income tax person would cost the city, and did cost the city. Uh, for many years. Um, and I think that's important to say, because Rita so far has been very good, not just the income tax process, it will get better. But I also just wanna mention Rita, the staff member is also amazing, she's been great too, in this setting. The last thing I wanted to say was, I was really inspired by a story today, somebody gave their story about what auditors are supposed to do. And I think in keeping with this theme about what I'm saying here, which is what do auditors do versus what do they not do? And I know there's at least one person in the room who knows that story, because there's, there's an auditor sitting here, or about the story, but what auditors do. And somebody gave a story about, they knew somebody who was in med school. And the professor got called for an emergency and left the room. And they were in the middle of an exam, and when you know it, everybody's cheat sheets and notes came out, and everybody started talking. And they were gonna help each other through this exam. I'm the only one's gonna enjoy this story, I know this by the way. And this person, one of the people in the back stood up and said. I moved my family to a small apartment from a house we used to own, I've got three kids at a new school, and I wanna be a doctor. And none of you people in this room are gonna risk my family's future for this exam. So I am going to tell that professor on every single person in this room who's cheating. Or we can just take this test the normal way and finish it like people should do, instead of cheating. And they told this story today at conference, I thought it was great because most of us are gonna relate with, we just want a good grade. But somebody in the room's paid to do the wet blanket, and it's my job to blow the whistle from time to time. And thanks for giving me, uh, eight or nine minutes, so that's my auditor's committee.
Thanks, sir. Question to approve the auditor and treasurer's report?
Mr. Sherman? Mr. Boone?
Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Okay, the mayor's report, we don't have one. Okay, citizens' comments, um. Thirty minutes tonight, max, three minutes per person, must be a resident of the community. And their personal tax, so how about it? Please state your name and address for the records.
I know, so I just, I packed something up, so I'm just gonna read it word for word, so what I said is what I said, it can't be, I can't get all worked up with them. Hello, my name's John Bates, I live in Walnut Street, um, here this evening to talk about your A B T V friendly ordinance. Um, even though I don't agree with it, I get what you're trying to do, bringing riders in off the way National Forest Trails to local businesses. But they aren't the problem. We have created a play area and a racetrack for locals. For the last few weeks, I have watched four-wheelers go up and down Walnut Street, Poplar Street, and the alley between the two. Normally with an adult and a small child on them. Um, thankfully recently, the adults started putting helmets on the children. Um, but they constantly run the stop signs daily. Um. I have done public records requests by email, so it's documented requesting the ordinance, I've not heard nothing back. Um, so I didn't wanna waste the police department's time by calling in complaints and poor. Um, today I finally received it, thank you Jason Cohn. For helping somebody make sure I got that sent finally, after a couple of weeks of trying. Um, yesterday, May twenty-first, I watched again, four-wheelers all day while I was working outside. Then a small four-wheeler started going down Poplar Street with an adult female and kids on it. Um, third time a wife and I's watched lady go down with the small children on it, um, flying, I'd say approximately thirty mile an hour. And I know how to judge a bee. Um, with a motorcycle, a street bike with two adults chasing it. The motorcycle passed them, then they turned on the third street, went down the alley, took probably the one-year-old or younger off the, on the motorcycle with the adults, and flew down the alley between Chestnut and Paul. So I called the police department, I'd had enough, I wasn't got my flight. Waited forty minutes, never saw a cruiser. I had to leave, run over Jacksonville to pick up my camper, because my son had been using it to race it. Um, as I'm coming back down Poplar Street, luckily I'm pulling my fifth wheel, so I'm going pretty darn slow. I had to stop in the middle of the street, the third street. Because here comes the same four-wheeler with maybe a teenager on it, and maybe a one-year-old, down the middle of the street. So then again, I called and I demanded to stop somebody, and I got a hold of who they said was supervisor owned it. And I gave my anger and displeasure, I grew up in Boise, I knew him quite well, he knew I was frustrated. Finally, an officer arrived after the four-wheeler gone by a couple more times, stopped it, and there was probably a seven or eight-year-old child at dusk. On this four-wheeler on Second Street at Poplar Street, no helmet, no lights, no safety protection. Um, I have done many public records requests in the past, and I called in complaints with no response, communications from anyone in the city. As a resident, I'm starting to feel it's personal, because I'm a former city employee. Someone in this town's gonna seriously get hit, hit or killed, because what you are allowing is our council. My question is, what are you guys gonna do about it before somebody gets killed? Thank you.
So may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is it the same person?
Yeah, no, like with the children, the one child yesterday, absolutely it was, um, that was a small, probably an eighty at most size. Constantly, all day long, I worked outside all day long where I keep my camper, cleaning up the lot, it was all day long. There's people that live at the corner of Third Street and Poplar Street, it's all day long, two fours, two older gentlemen with young kids, at least they put helmets on to clear them out. They run same speeds, but they run the stop sign every time. I mean, I was spoken to this far down the road, and she's like, I'm scared, they're gonna get hit and killed every day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tell me, I'd like to take you back on my way here, going up Fourth Street, four-wheeler, an adult in the middle, young child in the front. Young teen on the back, so a four-wheeler with three of them flying up Fourth Street.
All evening before I came here, uh, racing along up and down Second Street, I'm done calling, I'll stop my cars.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Greg Smith, I live at two thirty-eight Adams Street, and I'd like to introduce Kirk Robinett. Who is the founder of the New Nelsonville Tribute Facebook page, and it's a great thing, come up there, Kirk, let people. Kirk graduated Nelsonville High School about nineteen sixty-two, fifty-two. And that's kind of what I come here tonight, because I don't really wanna cause any trouble or cause anything, I just wanna state. What a great place Nelsonville was to grow up. And as a result, Kirk was having a little trouble with the page, because. We only allow people to talk about what a great place that, uh, the, the town is. Birthdays, we don't allow drama, and we don't allow any, any meanness.
And he doesn't allow me to do any of that stuff he just said.
But it has made, it had, I think it has made that page very successful.
I do too.
Because, because people enjoy talking about old times and how great it was to live in Nelsonville, and I'm sitting there looking around the room. I see Leanne, and I, me and her parents were, were the best friends growing up. I, and I, I look around and I see everybody that I grew up with. And I even see Stuki, who I usually argue with, but I happen to agree with him, I just, you know, if you shook hands. I would just like to say that Nelsonville. And to the chief, nobody out here is gonna get violent, I mean. It, you, you have some mouths that are run, but nobody will get violent. Uh, that's what I thought, that's not the people that I grew up with. I would just like to say that when, when this town thinks somebody's not been treated fairly, they're gonna react, and they're gonna react such as this. And I think what we should do is try to move on, get Bernie his keys back, get him his computer back. Let him have a fair chance to run this city and see how things are going.
You're here.
Let's not have the foolishness of being mad at one another. I mean, I could be really mad at Stuki at times, and we shook hands tonight. So I just want, I just wanted to leave it at that, someone find the old town that I grew up, because if we find that town again, it, people will flock to it in great numbers. Yeah, I'll have a great day.
Thank you.
I'm Stuart Brooks on one twenty-three East Walnut Street. Uh, Greg's right, we're not gonna hug, but we'll, we'll take care of it. Coming here this morning, coming here tonight, it's, it reminds me of a family reunion, after people are happy, no half are sad. So we need to fix something, and if you don't think there's not a problem in this town, look at this group, look at how many people we have. I've never seen this many people in city council, I've never seen that parking lot full like that, so there is a problem, there is definitely a problem. Now, we're sitting in this town, we've had eight city managers in eight years, I think about that. And think about, if you're gonna come to this city, and you want to, wanna open a business. Uh, you want to live in this town's form. Who do you, I mean, the last few years, especially the last couple of months. Who do you see? What do you tell somebody? Go to the city, see the city manager, well, he's not there, don't have one now. You go see, run down, somebody had a city council, where are they at? They're not in an office, and so on and so forth. So I don't know how many people we, we, we're, we're losing. I do know of one person that we're losing, and it was a rope manufacturer out of Northport, Ohio. He now has a good year plant in Logan. He came down there and I said to him, you don't want, you don't wanna do anything here, this place, you can't, you can't get an answer, he's looking for some room, he's looking for space. So that's one that I know personally, we lost. He manufactured right now, just put a million-dollar roof on the, on that building. So these are problems we're having, we have a twenty-four million or whatever sewer plant that's being put in below town here, twenty-four million dollars. And we're sitting here. And we, this young gentleman here in the police office, seemed like a nice young man, probably got his hands full, right here just running the police department. And you're gonna have him the acting manager of this town. Does that make any sense? Does that make any sense of?
No.
So we're sitting down there with this multi-million dollar project. There gotta be changes on it, there's gotta be people they gotta talk, there's gotta people that gotta answer questions on. I think we are as close as having this town taken over by the state of Ohio. We look simple.
Yes.
Athens don't have this, Logan don't have this, we're sitting there in little Nelsonville, and we're acting like little kids. You know, we don't get together. And you're right, I agree with Greg a hundred percent. This gentleman needs a change, this gentleman has a huge investment in this community, a huge investment, not only in Nelsonville, outside of Nelsonville. He knows how to run a business, he's taken, you know, away from his family, his business, to come in here and help us straighten this up. You need to give him a chance, a chance, but you're never gonna win, you're never gonna win. I had a coach a long time ago, we all, he, we were kids, and he came in, he said, you know, I don't care how great a shape you're in, I don't care how good of a player you think you are. If you don't wanna be part of this team, please, go home.
Amen.
You'll never win by yourself. So it's time, and like I said, I appreciate the people from Nelsonville, they really stood up tonight. And if we can't work together. We're never gonna win, you don't have a chance. So folks, let's give this gentleman a chance, a fair chance, a real chance. And let's get going forward, before somebody steps in EPA and says, you know, this is BS. We're spending this kind of money in this community, and we can't even find anybody even runs it. It's not gonna happen. So please, listen for once, and let's go forward, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Betty Jo Parsley. And. Stinky and I last week talked about this, and what we could do to try to put moving. Back in the town, that obviously we're not the only people who care about it, yeah, all of you were here tonight, thank you. So I had someone say to me, who serves on the school board. That there's a concern that with us being so disorganized. That the new water line is going to be ran up Fourth Street and then on over to Book Bowl. This will make them have better service than they have now, how valuable that is. And here we sit, appointing and reappointing members of city council, a, a new city manager, and instead of tending to the most important thing we have here. And it's our reputation. I, I'm sure that people who would even think about coming here for vacation would have to think twice. We have the train, we have Stuart's Opera House, we have a beautiful square. The Opera House has been full for the past two weeks with all kinds of activities, our children are a pride, we have a great swimming pool. I don't know what the status of that is, but I know council can't run the pool and do all the things that need to be done. We, we need to get back to what priorities are, and look at one another, and find a way to get along, this bickering is wrong. That's not, men have a saying, but that isn't what God wants for us, he wants us to all be together. And I'm gonna ask you, as someone who does love this town. Why I sit and still have a notebook, and I wrote for years for the paper, it's because I want to be able to know what's. it's because I want to be able to know what's going on, because I care. And everyone of you obviously is scared of fight, and I want to thank you personally for that.
Thank you.
Do we have time?
Sure, go ahead.
So my name is Rita Nguyen, I live at one thirty-three East Columbus Street. Most of us here are government, because I'm very new, I've been here almost three years. But we purchased a house here because I fell in love with the home. But it was more than that. I saw in this small community the potential of what it could be if those that run the town did the right thing and cared more about doing things for the community than for their best buddies or their groups or whatever's going on, okay? I have seen this done. Coming from Texas, there's a small town called Fredericksburg. There's nothing there. It is a one street town, and that place is jam packed every day of the week. There's no attractions, it's restaurants and shops. But they make money hand over fist, because the town is nice, it's clean, it's good. And aside from that, folks are friendly, they're nice to each other, they work with whatever they have to do to make this happen. And I know this town has that potential, which is why we stayed. We were gonna go home. But we stayed because I can see what this town can become, given everyone working together and putting aside differences, whatever the cause may be. For me, I never dealt with the city council, because things in Texas are much different than they are run here, I have found out. But from my personal knowledge in business and what have you, I feel honestly that it is best to have, it's called a city manager for a reason, to manage the city. And I understand that council has to vote on certain things, the bigger things. The issues that matter more than anything else, the issues that are gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yes, absolutely, let's vote on that. Let's make sure that we're making the right decision for the town. But our little things like, let's change the rates for the aquatic center. You know, let's just lower it by ten bucks. The council shouldn't have to vote on that. I mean, that is common sense that a city manager, it's his job to be able to figure these things out and do what he needs to do to make the community better. And I have to say, I've only been here for three weeks in their office, but I will say that every proposal that Bernie has worked on, that I have personally seen and read, has had nothing negative in it. The only thing I saw was potential for the betterment of this town. So I have to say, not knowing all the backroom stuff that goes on, I do not understand why he has been pushed out of his office. This is a man who has a PhD in organic chemistry. He has multiple businesses that do well. He knows what he's doing. He does not need to be micromanaged. So give him the chance to do the job that he was hired to do and put aside all the other stuff, so that Nelsonville can become, one more time, what it used to be. Even though I wasn't here then. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Comment, because if not, I would like to make a comment. I don't know if I should do it under citizen's comments, or I could do it under city manager report, but I feel it's important that I address the people that have come out today. And so if you wouldn't mind, council, I would like to take a few minutes of everybody's time. I did prepare a statement, I do have some handouts here that I can give out as I get through my presentation. I do take the time to write it out, so I don't miss anything. Rita, now I really know why I hired you, because you're really a terrific person and really do a fantastic job. So, and I feel that I need to say what I'm gonna say, just so there's some color on what happened. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank my family, the citizens, the community, and the business leaders for coming out to support me tonight. I know you guys took it upon yourselves to rally. I didn't really push anybody to be here, but I really appreciate, with all my heart, you guys being here. I really want to convey to everyone how passionate I am about Nelsonville. As Stuart mentioned, you know, when we came here back in two thousand twelve, when we made our first investment, I mean, it wasn't intentionally set out that we were gonna become property managers or get so involved in the tourism industry. It's just something that happened and it became a passion that we believed in, that Nelsonville is a true diamond in the rough, and I don't think it's even coming anywhere close to the potential that it has. So I really want to convey to everybody how passionate I am about helping Nelsonville become a stronger, better, more welcoming community for homeowners, businesses, and visitors and tourists. We need to encourage to come to our community. We need to become a collaborative governmental unit and a city in which other communities across the region and state aspire to be well. You know, we should be the role model because of the things that we already have here. Cities would die to have the Hockey Valley City train, Stuart Opera House, the beautiful historic train, Wayne National Forest, Hocking Hills in their back door. You know, we call ourselves the star of Hocking Hills, but we really don't promote that as well as I believe we should. So with that being said, and I don't want to go dark here, but as many of you may be aware, last Monday, we went into an executive session meeting. During the executive session, we were supposed to talk about council issues. Instead, it turned out to be a hostile environment where the president of city council became outraged yelling and slandering my character, forcing me to resign under distress. And it was a knee jerk reaction. There were six other council members present to witness his actions, at least one that resigned because of the constant stress that he experienced in this meeting and on prior meetings. I rescinded my resignation after the overwhelming response that I got from community, business leaders, friends, that I would, and I indicated to council via email, it's all public record, that I would be back to work the very next day. In the meantime, city council president asked for legal opinion based on my resignation and my rescinding that resignation. Our city attorney offered an opinion letter, which is public record. I won't take the time to read it today. In summary, the city attorney is claiming that I was an at-will employee and I don't have the right to rescind my resignation. I would argue, and you can ask council members who were present during the interview process, I was appointed as city manager, not acting nor interim. There's a video on Facebook confirming my appointment. I was put on the payroll as city manager as a public employee and paid as a public employee, receiving Oprah's benefits. Therefore, I have rights as a public employee. I have case law from the Ohio Supreme Court supports the fact that I have the right to rescind my resignation, and I'm going to pass out a case study to the council members and so that they can see that Davis versus Marion County Engineer, Supreme Court finding nineteen ninety-one. I'm sorry, taking the time to do this, but.
We've got time.
All right, I've got extra copies of anybody, and I also got copies of what I'm discussing here as well. So there's highlighted in this case study the rights that a public employee has to rescind the resignation. This is Davis versus Marion County nineteen ninety-one, wherein the Supreme Court considered the question of whether, under the circumstances, what circumstances, a public employer or officer may withdraw his or her prospective resignation before its effective date. At the syllabus, the Supreme Court held, a public employee may rescind or withdraw a tender of resignation at any time prior to its effective date, so long as the public employer, which would be the council as one body, has not formally accepted such tender of resignation. I did not put it in writing, nor did I specify a time. Acceptance of a tender of resignation for public employment occurs where the public employer, which in this case is the city of Nelsonville and council, or its designated agents initiate some type of affirmative action, preferably in writing, as highlighted, that clearly indicates to the employee that the tender of the resignation is accepted by the employer. I also have public records indicating that four out of the seven council members confirmed that I was allowed to come back to work after I rescinded my resignation. City attorney will further try to argue that I did not have a contract in place with the city that supports I was not a contracted employee. By the way, I sent my contract to the city attorney on April twenty-sixth for review and comment, it was never sent back to me. I would argue that on day one, I asked our auditor about my contract, and I was told that most city managers write their own contract and submit it for approval by the president and the city attorney. And then I asked the auditor if he had a signed copy of the previous interim city manager's contract, and the auditor did not. The auditor commented and placed me on an email copy requesting requesting a copy of the contract of the interim city manager on several occasions, which is public record. We still don't have a signed contract by the city attorney for the previous interim city manager, which leads one to believe it's standard practice. I feel that I have a seat at the table. I came back to work the next day, worked until I was told by IT my access would be, my computer was requested to be turned off by the city attorney on Thursday evening, and the next day my locks were changed by the director of public service on order of the city attorney. So my question to council is simply this. Was there a special meeting that was held to accept my resignation? If there was, where is the public record and the recording of it? I stand here before city council and the community letting you know that I want to be your city manager. I am your city manager, and I only have the best interest of the city and community in mind. So I know they want me to take a seat over there, but I feel if I do that, then I am indicating to council that I don't want to be city manager, and I have rights as a public employee to rescind my resignation under the Supreme Court. And if the city council feels strongly enough that they want to fight this, then I would recommend that they take it to a higher proceeding. But until then, I'm gonna stay seated as city manager.
Since the last update, we're starting to come in now. We just did delivery of relief insurance, strong arm extrication equipment today. That's another extrication device, a matter of operating like the license that we already have. The Ethan Glove Award has been first created, so that money's been pre-created. We're working on purchasing those rugged or tough pieces now. The grant for the structural hoods and gloves has been completed. That award has also been delivered, we've actually been able to put those in the bathroom. Can you use? Since the last report, we've actually responded to two structural fire calls and one commercial boiler fire. We're still partnering with Red Cross right now for smoke detectors installed in St. Nelsonville. Again, our firefighters have to make an assessment of the home and actually install those detectors for paperwork, because it is not our program, it's actually a Red Cross program. My throat's scratching, we don't have allergies, so if anybody needs to speak up, we know. We have one firefighter just finished hazmat tech training and is now a certified hazmat technician. We also have another firefighter that will be finishing a M and P class in June. For those of you that don't know, May is mental health awareness month. On May tenth, I attended all day training on personal corner mental health and wellness. They would bring back much needed information and resources for our crew and the distance crew members. With the add of tourism on the river between the city, a large amount of residents have had it over the years. Our department annually goes out and does a cleanup of the river. So we will find problem snag areas or problem areas where we have pulled people off of the river repeatedly from the same tree or from going on the same tree. We started that program last year. Our crew members went out, along with crew members from the canoe livery, because they have hard sided canoes. And we would actually cut some of the snags out and remove the problem areas out of the river. We did the same thing again on April twentieth this year. Of course, we utilized some of their crew members as well. Again, this is a public safety issue, this is why we do this, and it's an annual event that we do. It's not a river cleanup, we don't go out picking up trash. We locate problem snag areas, problem areas that keeps our responders safe and keeps the tourists safe, and they actually show up on the river. April thirtieth was the second annual Thomas Howard Bike Day event. Most of our fire department participated, and all of them that participated finished the event, so that's a really a trial. On May sixth, we represented the fire department as an evaluator for another full scale of functional exercise for the county, that's an LEPC EMA exercise. A lot of times I've asked, they've been evaluated or controller for these events. So that was an all day training there for hazard materials. And after that was fitting with the training element with chemical and fire. May seventeenth, I attended additional bomb threat and swatting training offered through the FBI Joint Air and Task Force. That just gives us more information on swatting, which is what happened in Logan, in Montego. Which is fake emails and fake phone calls for bomb threats, most of the schools. On May eighteenth, we participated in career day, the elementary school. That turned into a little bit of an all day symposium event. So what we did was we interacted with the children in between EMS and fire calls. And then finished up on the nineteenth with additional fire prevention education for the eighth grade students. I've got an additional active shooter and campus emergency class scheduled for June twenty-first. I believe this can take place at the Athens School. Since the last update, we've also taught more fire signature classes to local businesses. You know, these things promote safety and wellness in the community. These are things that we offer to the fire department that are free to business. Sometimes there's incentives for those businesses internalized. Just like we would look at gear restorers, employees doing CPR and AED. This last update, I think I told everybody that we had a decrease in overdose calls. We've had a sudden increase in overdose calls since the last update. We're seeing the same drugs, it's nothing new right now that's coming to the streets. Civil service testing has just completed, and we're working on physical ability testing right now. We should have that finished up with candidates by the end of next week. And that will help, it will sum our open for time today.
All right, uh the ratings, the ordinances. So we amended the agenda to add ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-three. Second reading of ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-three.
An ordinance pending twenty-two three, banning orders and paying the positions of interest keep a police and in her keep a fire and declaring emergency. There is a second reading.
Second reading, okay. Any council discussion?
This is the second reading, right?
Yeah, second reading. Motion to adopt?
So moved. Boo?
Yes.
Sonic? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yep.
Mr. Single? Yes.
Yes. So now we're to second reading of ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-five.
An ordinance setting the authorized staff in the city departments.
Any council discussion?
What was that number?
Twenty-five, twenty-three.
Twenty-five, twenty-three. Twenty-five, thirty-five.
Only moving rapidly ahead.
Well, there you go. I'm gonna get that.
Yes? Well, the big one. It is.
Okay, all right. Motion to adopt?
So moved. Mr. Simon? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Single? Yes. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-three, second reading.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-three appropriations order to appropriate from the general fund balance to the following. The sum of six thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars and zero cents from the unappropriated balance to line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash three three zero one seven body camera line fund and declaring an emergency.
Okay, any council discussion on that? Is that the fire department or police department on that? Please. I'm saying, yes, that's fire. Okay, motion to adopt?
Second. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Single? Yes. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman? Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Simon? Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? Oh, well.
An ordinance amending and setting the authorized staff in the city manager's office and declaring an emergency. Whereas the staffing in the city manager's office needs to be modified, and whereas the previous position of city manager is administrative assistant, assistant code officer, is to be split into two part-time jobs, namely administrative assistant and assistant code enforcement officer. Whereas the pay chart for the code enforcement officer shall remain the same as previously, and whereas the pay charts for the administrative assistant shall be from fourteen dollars to sixteen dollars per hour depending on experience. Whereas the code enforcement office was hired on May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, whereas administrative assistant was hired on May first, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three has passed under suspension of the rules. However, the emergency clause did not muster enough votes for ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three to pass on emergency. Whereas ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three will not go into effect until June seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at the earliest, when it needs to be revading back to May first, two thousand twenty-three, the administrative assistant and May eighth, two thousand twenty-three code enforcement. And whereas this ordinance is necessary for the two positions to remain employed for the benefit of the city and for the pay and creation of the positions to relate back to May first, two thousand twenty-three for the administrative assistant, assistant and May eighth, two thousand twenty-three for the code enforcement. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Adams County, Ohio as follows. The staffing in the city manager's office department shall be set as follows relating back to May first, two thousand twenty-three. One city manager, one part-time assistant administrative assistant, one part-time code enforcement officer, and one part-time law director, there is a code secretary. The pay chart, uh the code enforcement officer shall remain the same as previously solicited in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three staffing ordinance. This pay chart shall be retroactive to May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The pay chart for the administrative assistant shall be from fourteen dollars to sixteen dollars depending on experience. The pay chart shall be retroactive to May first, two thousand twenty-three. This ordinance supersedes the city manager's office staffing only in ordinance zero seven dash twenty-three adopted on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, section twelve point zero nine through twelve point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do not enact by council on first reading under suspension of the rule twenty-second day of May, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, any council discussion?
Yes, I brought up numerous concerns about the job discrepancies of the position. Have they been addressed yet?
We are, we are, we're going through the training process with both uh uh Rita and
Okay. I'm sorry.
Order. This is come to order. Okay, I don't know if they have it on.
All right.
Are you answering on that if they have anything?
I'm answering because we come to order. All right, motion to adopt? Okay. Oh, yeah, we got suspend rules. Motion to suspend? So moved.
Mr. Single? Yes. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes. Ordinance pushed to adopt. Motion to adopt. Second. Yeah.
Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-three.
Oh, this, this needs to be corrected at the top of the courtics and that's of our staffing agency.
Oh, yes.
It's water park. Forty twenty-three present.
An ordinance setting authorized staff in the aquatic center and declaring emergency. Whereas the existing water park needs to be amended. Whereas the purpose of this ordinance is to update the pool pricing schedule to reflect new pricing structure for the twenty twenty-three pool season and will remain in effect until pool pricing meets via updated. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio that the daily entry fee for in-town ages four and up, five dollars, children three and under are free. Daily entry fee for out-of-town ages four and up, five dollars, children three and under are free. Seasonal pass rates for a household minimum of six people with fifty dollars applied for each additional member over six is one hundred and ninety-nine dollars for in-town, two hundred and twenty-five dollars out-of-town. Adults eighteen plus, one hundred and twenty-five dollars in-town, one hundred and fifty dollars out-of-town. Use ages four to seventeen, one hundred dollars in-town, one hundred and twenty-five dollars out-of-town. Seniors over sixty-five, in-town rate is forty, out-of-town is sixty-five. Employees of the city of Nelsonville and their immediate family, close active duty service veterans, first responders with proper I D are all free. Nelsonville youth students will get an in-town rate for the student I D. Pool rental fees, uh pool rental rate is two hundred and fifty dollars for two hours. That's an asker hours rate. Pool rental fee is a hundred and fifty dollars during pool hour for up to fifty guests. Swimming lessons in water aerobics, forty-five dollars, church child per swimming lesson and, or I'm sorry, four swimming lessons, five dollars per water aerobic session and four dollars adult lap swim. Silver sneakers um are free with a uh not with their number. In-town rates must have Nelsonville address or school I D issued on a water bill or tax return. The city will offer a free swim on July fourth. Sponsors of swim days will get twenty-four percent off daily passes, a minimum of one hundred passes and limited to pool capacity. Session pricing is at the discretion of the city manager and or the pool manager. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point one nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Do not enact by council on first reading under suspension of the rules twenty-second day of May, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, any council discussion on said matter? Motion to suspend?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes.
And Mr. Single?
Yes.
Push to adopt?
So moved. Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Single? Yes. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Okay, we need to, before we do this, we need to go in the executive session, O R C one twenty.
Before we do that, John Flower, which I actually add to the
I think we need to accept Neil Summers' resignation first. Yeah. I'll second that.
I beg your pardon?
Need to accept Neil Summers' resignation.
Oh, yes, okay.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Command?
Yeah.
And Mr. Single? Sadly, yes. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes. Okay, so we need to go in the executive session, O R C one twenty-one dash twenty-two to uh for personal legal matters.
I mean, the last time we just did it in open councils, I thought, and we've already reviewed, interviewed Mr. Flowers' lawn.
No, 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 we discussed personnel issues.
Yes, I, I understand that. I'm, I'm just saying that the last time there was an open executive seat, we talked with both of the
You have to post it. You have to follow it. We have to post the opening.
I beg your pardon?
We have to post the opening on website that we're accepting letters or after we just
But we already have a letter from a candidate who was willing to take, then we took it the last time, why do we have to do it again?
We just accepted, so now we have to post. And then we can see what we give, and then, then we, we argue. Let's help it.
Do you have timeframe?
Two weeks, next meeting?
Actually, the next meeting, I believe, is
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Next regular council meeting will be motion to go in the executive session. So moved. Second.
And Sonic? No. Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Single? No. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Okay, motion to adjourn? So moved. You're going to second over the code of the order? Second, hold on.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
No. No. Mr. Douffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Yes.
And Sonic? No.
I think we need to so this issue with, with Bernie.
Why don't you run? Yes. Run. Run.
All right, so what do we want to do? What do we want to do?
Make a motion?
Make a motion. I, I make the motion that we, you know, bring Bernie back on board as far as, you know, we never accepted his resignation, number one.
We don't need to bring him back on board because we never accepted his resignation to begin with.
All right, I don't know how, I'm gonna go ahead and, I just want to just end. We need a city manager, we need council to get along, so what's the motion? Not accepting his resignation, I don't, I mean, I don't know what, how it works. But, you know, this just needs to stop.
The city can't wait three weeks. If I understand the way the whole process went down, and I was there, so I do. There was a hostile environment in which Mr. Roll felt I don't want to say threatened because that's a very strong word, but at, at one point, he felt that the situation was such that he jumped up and said, I quit, and walked out the door. He did not submit a letter of resignation giving a date in which he would no longer be in the office. The council did not receive such a letter in order to vote on accepting his resignation. He rescinded his resignation the very next day before twenty-four hours had passed. He attempted to come back in and go to work in that office, but was unable to do so because he was not able to get into computer, his office, whatever. I believe that's the way it went down.
So I guess the motion would be to return his keys and turn his computer access back on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Set him as a city manager.
That's right.
He was not hired as interim, though, i- i- he was hired as city manager, as quoted in The Messenger, and as quoted in your minutes from the movie.
Okay. What's the motion?
To, I guess, return his keys and, and turn his access to his computer back on.
I have his mailbox.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, okay, is that to use the city manager?
Can I have this?
No. That would not be a good time.
Yeah. Call order, let, or, or, let, let's, we got a motion on the floor. Oh. Call them. Oh, do we have a second?
Yes.
Well, before you get started, order.
Order. All right, we have a motion on, on the floor.
I just want to make order.
We have a motion on the floor. Order.
Command?
No.
Mr. Single?
Yes.
Mr. Douffey?
No.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Is everybody resigned? Or is everybody left his keys? No. No.
Uh, you resigned three times. We have a tie vote. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen. It just means we have a tie vote.
Well.
It didn't fail either.
I mean, there shouldn't, there shouldn't have been a vote on whether I get my keys back.
Motion to adjourn.
Not, because
It's going to happen.
Hold on, man.
I, first of all, I have my keys in my pocket. My keys are in my pocket.
Order.
Right here, I'm going to show everybody. My keys to the office are here. They changed where my
He's trying to fake. Letting fake. Letting fake.
Excuse me, so you can have a double standard? Excuse me, so you can resign and then you can turn around and
Yes.
This is acceptable to the government. Are you going to remove me? By the way, I missed this roll and this was a double standard. I resigned and then came back, so my husband has the right to come back.
Let's ring order. Move to adjourn.
Do not, don't go there. Don't go there, come on, come on.
We're the way to treat people who are, you're We're the ones who said we wanted you and then you embarrass us like this. It's wrong. Remember November elections are coming up. Remember this.
We don't have that long a time. This town is a mess.
Well. Three weeks is too long.
That's right.
Where's my keys? They're in my pocket.
Three weeks is too long.
Yes. And who gave, ask the council, who gave the city attorney direction to turn my computer off? And change my key back.
You're supposed to represent us. Walk away now, we're
Yeah, walk away.
Walk away. You do not represent this city.
No. Why don't you let Mr. Smith speak in there?